Mayor Roland Dykes?
Yes, here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight. Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurd?
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham?
Here.
Thank you, Tina. We now have, if you've had a chance to look at your minutes, it's in your packet. We'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion on the board. Any discussion? When we have a motion on the board then to approve the minutes as presented, please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries without opposition. We have, item four is proclamations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor, of which I have none at this time.
Well, Mayor, I hate just to interrupt, sir, I apologize, but what about a recognition from a citizen to the mayor? Is that something we could do at this point? Or is that something you want to wait till the end of the meeting to do?
I'm amenable to it.
Okay. Rob?
One more.
You're up.
I always like to receive gifts. Chat down.
Yeah. Hope you got kibble.
Sit. I'd like to do my wife.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity of doing this tonight. This past Thursday, we had the opportunity to dedicate the new Ambit's Post 75 Community Resource Center. And I'm here tonight as the commander of Post 75 to thank the city. We, I had the honor of presenting these certificates to others that were involved in this project from the beginning. It wouldn't have happened at all if it hadn't been for Alderman Smith standing up and talking for us and Gary Carver and, of course, Mr. Fincham backed the opportunity to have this facility. So I'd just like to take a minute, and since you weren't available this last week, I would like to present this plaque to you. Let me see. I'll get my phone out for you. Mr. Mayor, if I could, sir, in recognition and our heartfelt thanks, this is presented to the city of Newport with your guidance that we've been able to come into the Tannen Building and we want to be a good partner within that building and to be able to help bring the history alive. And we'll be working with Walter State to give us a work-study student, put in there 20 hours a week to help tell the history as well as giving directions and information to the veterans of this community. So we'd like to thank you for allowing this organization that's been together since 1988 to have its first home. And we appreciate every bit of it.
Thank you, Rob. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Obviously, I didn't do this on my own, but we're always grateful to have good organizations in that building. Most of you have seen that building has come to life again, and I have, obviously, it holds a special place in my heart. So anybody, anyone that's doing anything special in that building, I congratulate. Thank you, Rob, for this plaque. It really means a lot to them.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to interrupt, but...
I always accept accepting gifts.
Mayor, if I can, I would like to recognize Rafting in the Smokies, Mark and Brenda Schultz. They recently donated a raft to the Newport Fire Department to use in their swift water rescue efforts in the future. So I just would like to recognize them and a big huge thank you for that donation.
Okay.
And we are going to be getting a photograph with them to thank them, put it put on our own, online on social media and also try to get it in the paper. So to recognize them for that.
Any other recognition by Alderman Smith? Anyone else? Okay, we will move on. Item five is communications from our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. For the COVID update, the COVID numbers are slowly going down. We have finally dropped back into double digits as opposed to triple digits as far as the positive count in the county. And we haven't had any city employees out since our last meeting, either with the sickness or through exposure. We do have a employee's spouse who is struggling really bad and doesn't look real good for them right now, and so our prayers go out with them. But hopefully, the Delta surge has kind of run its course for now, and it's going down a lot slower than it went up. But it is trending down here and in all the surrounding counties. So hopefully, that's a good sign. As you all probably are aware, the president recently instructed OSHA to come up with a standard that requires all employers in excess of 100 to require that all their employees either be vaccinated or take weekly tests at their expense. And a appeals court has put a stay on that for now. The target, the date for that to go into effect was January 4th, but for now, and we do have over 100 employees, so that's why I'm bringing that up. But that has been put on hold by a federal judge, and we'll see where that goes. The legislature, the state legislature passed a bill saying that the state of Tennessee was not going to honor that. And generally, a state law cannot supersede a federal law, so we'll, but we'll see where that goes. It is my intent, unless you all tell me otherwise, to not put that into place until I'm made to. I don't, I have no intent. They're urging, I read today, where the federal government is urging employers to go ahead and implement that, even though that the judge has said we don't have to for now. And again, unless you all direct me otherwise, I have no intent on putting that in place until I'm made to it. Because I do believe my personal choice is that that is a, that that is a personal choice whether or not you take a, take a vaccine. And I don't think that, that your job should be predicated on that. If you don't take a vaccine, you lose your job. I don't, I don't agree with that. But I'll, what the law makes me do, I'll do. I won't violate the law, but I'm going to have to be made to it. I won't, otherwise, no. Update on the Rescue Squad. We, we have resolved that issue that we talked about a few months ago as far as the confusion about getting us a associate membership with the Rescue Squad Association of Tennessee so that we get a discount on our training. We moved forward with the training. Jeremy found an alternate source for the training, and so we moved forward without having to pay a penalty. So as of now, we, we didn't spend any extra money during that time, and now that has been resolved and we are associate members. So all that has gone to the wayside, and hopefully, we can move forward without any further confusion on that front. In your packet, there is a sheet, or I'm not, sorry, I'm not in your packet, but on the desk in front of your seat, there's a packet that looks like this. And I'm going to ask that this be added to the bid opening at the end. We, at the end of last week, we had a vehicle at the, we only have, we have two recycling vehicles that pick up recycling. And one of those was slated to be replaced this year, and we budgeted money to replace it. And at the end of last week, the motor blew up in it. And so it's now down, and we only have one recycling vehicle. And so we would like to accept, to accept this bid, it's the state bid, it's out of Murfreesboro, forward down there. But they currently have one on the lot. And right now, I think, again, everybody's a wire of the struggle you have trying to order a vehicle. Because they don't make them until you order them, and you may get it six months from now. And we can't stand to be with only one recycling pickup truck for months at a time. It's just too much of a strain to try to pick up the entire town with one vehicle. And so we would like to go tomorrow and get it, so we can quickly get it on the road and get the stress off of trying to get the whole town picked up with one truck. But that will require getting it on the, the bid opening on the agenda tonight because we didn't foresee this being an issue until that one went down. And, and we didn't know how long it'd take to get one till Ben managed to find this one on the state bid on the, on the lot in Nashville. So if you all will agree to that, we'll put that on the bid opening and then whatever y'all's pleasure it is, but we would like to go get that thing.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's in the budget. This doesn't require any money. It's already in the budget.
Okay, I think this, I wanted to keep, toward the agenda, we probably need to suspend the rules, need a motion to suspend the rules to add this to the agenda. So...
Make a motion.
Have a motion, okay. We have a motion to suspend the rules to add this to the agenda. All in favor? All opposed. Will it be added at the bids and...
Thank you. I appreciate it. The last thing I have, and I could talk about this now or later, but I'll just go ahead and do it now while I've got the floor. In the budget amendment that, that we have tonight, there is, we have, at some of y'all's requests, and I think that we've discussed, I've discussed it with all of you individually at one time or another, but a couple of y'all had asked me about that you wanted this done. We have, Tina and I spent a large amount of money, time, I'm sorry, working on this. And, but we have come up with a way and that we can, and we can afford to bring our lowest-paid people up to a minimum of $15 an hour. We have several people, the garbage truck men would be the best example, that make like 12.61 an hour. And so that's a, that's a hot, nasty, cold, wet job. And, you know, I, just looking at it objectively, on a, on a cold day or a snowy day or a wet, hot day or whatever, if I'd rather, if I had the choice between working at Lowe's or flipping burgers and slanging these nasty, sloppy trash cans around, I'm afraid that Lowe's might win out. And so you all had mentioned to me about wanting to do that, and I appreciate y'all's concern about the employees, and I agree with that. And so that is in the, the budget amendment tonight to bring all of those folks up that, bring the, the full-time folks up to a starting wage of $15 an hour and the part-time folks $12 an hour, who are currently at 10 and 10.50. That'll bring them up to 12.
We need to vote on that now?
Well, no, no, sir. That's, that's later, but I said, but I just wanted to, you know, a lot of times we talk about, you know, the, the, the budget amendments are just housekeeping things where we're just moving money around. This is new money, and I wanted to just go ahead while I was talking and talk about it. Yeah, it's later, but I wanted to make it clear that, that y'all, some of y'all had requested, we look at that, and we are addressing that, and we're, we're proud to be able to do that for our people because you can't survive on $12 an hour. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Item six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. And item A is consideration of appointment to the Newport Housing Authority Board, Mike Hannan's term. Just to clarify, is Mr. Hannan being considered or is he being replaced?
He's been reappointed.
Reappointed.
Considered for reappointment. He, he's interested in serving, and there's nobody else that's name has been put forward.
Okay. All right, you have heard, or you've been able to consider the appointment. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to set Mike Hannan back on the board.
I'll say.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, you signify your approval by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carries without opposition. Mr. Hannan's reappointed. Reports from committees, members of council, and other officers, Tannen Preservation Alliance. And Mr. Carver says there's nothing he wants to report. Item eight is old business or unfinished business. And this is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-08, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read that caption of that ordinance in the record. It's ordinance number 2021-08, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2021-2022. Second reading.
Okay, you've had, you've had the reading, heard the reading. Board's pleasure. We need roll call, please, I'm sorry. We need a motion up first.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
And we need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Number nine is new business. And item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2021-09, adopting an unclaimed property policy.
Chief, you want to explain that? This came through the police department, but this is something that has been mandated that we need to do, and, but the chief, Schultz, has kind of headed that up as far as coming up with a policy for us, and we tweaked it a little bit, but I'll let him talk about it.
Attorney, reading it, reading it first, or do you want to get him to explain?
Go ahead, Chief.
This, basically what this does is makes us compliant with what the law says we need to do. And an example, if that chair was recovered by the police department, we were unable to find the owner, no one could claim it, by this ordinance, at 30 days, it would become property to be sold by the police department. And we got this from UTM, passed from their law enforcement advisors, and this is as close as we could come to exactly what they said that they thought would be the best for us. And it was, this was written by one of their legal divisions.
And Mayor, I'll read that caption in the record. It's ordinance 2021-09, an ordinance to amend the city of Newport municipal code Title V, municipal finance and taxation, adding Chapter IV, adopting an unclaimed property policy.
Okay. Board's pleasure. You've heard the reading of the ordinance. We need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. The person.
Quick. I'll say.
You're not quick enough, Steve. All right, we have a motion then on the board. Is any discussion? Then we'll need a roll call or a motion to, we've already had a motion to approve. It's been properly seconded. We roll call for a vote.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Motion carries. Item C, no, I'm sorry, item B is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2021-10, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
Now, Mayor, this is what I was speaking about earlier, and just to clarify, to be clear, this does not go into effect till the first of the year. It will, it will require a second reading and a public hearing, just like all other budget amendments. And, but, but it's slated to go into effect first of January.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance in the record. It's ordinance 2021-10, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2021-2022.
Okay, heard the reading. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to set that per reading. Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board then. It's been properly seconded, approved, pre-approved by a normal sign of aye. We need roll call?
Yes, we're on an ordinance.
On the...
Roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item C is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2021-11, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And that's ordinance number 2021-11, an ordinance amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2021-2022 for Newport Grammar School.
Okay, you've heard the reading, heard the ordinance? Excuse me. It's board, board's pleasure.
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-11. Has written.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to approve the ordinance 2021-11, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School. Has been properly seconded. We need roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item D is consideration of resolution number 2021-10, authorizing the city of Newport to open a credit card bank account at Newport Federal Bank.
Okay. One of the things the board wanted the city to be able to start doing is accepting credit card payments. This is part of the process. I have been in contact with local government, and they are working on it. This is the next step, is to open the bank account that would accept those payments. And it's not going to be ready to go just when we open this bank. This is for testing purposes first. And then once they make sure everything's working properly, we can go to the next step. So, but this would have the same signatories, which will be the board, myself, and James.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion on the board to approve, authorizing the city of Newport to open a credit card bank account at Newport Federal Bank. It has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will, we don't need a roll call on this one, I don't think, do we?
No, sir.
All right, please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And any names? Motion carries without opposition. Item E is consideration of resolution number 2021-11, adopting a plan of service for property located at 1026 West Highway 2570.
Let me be clear about the resolution and the wording and the agenda. This resolution actually annexes in the property, adopting the plan of service is just part of it. So it's actually the resolution to annex the property, and I think this is the last thing that you guys have to do and the rest of it. The other 12 bullet points, there's stuff that Regina and I'll do, so hopefully, it's the last time I come in front of you with this part.
And to make the record clear, the resolution says on the face, it's a resolution to annex certain...
Thank you, Terry. Yeah. We got that right, yeah.
So the board wants you to do it, that's why we're going to, if you pass that resolution.
Questions? All right, you've heard, heard the reading and explanation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to set that resolution 2021-12.
The 11.
11. I'm sorry. 11.
I say.
Okay, did you, did you amend it? Okay, I'm sorry. All right, we have a motion then on the board to approve the resolution as presented. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we need a vote.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item F is consideration of resolution number 2021-12, closing and quitclaim the alley right-of-way at Twilight Lane.
If you are familiar with the block of property behind Brooks off of Lincoln Avenue and First Street, Mr. Knight had purchased most of that, cleaned all of, almost all of it off a couple of years ago. He's now gotten that last piece of property, so he owns everything within that block. He was interested in closing down Twilight, yeah, Twilight Lane, just the portion that is between his pieces of property, because I think that in the future, he wants to do a bigger development that wouldn't be impeded by that right-of-way. So this resolution closes that, quitclaims the property to him, and the planning commission did pass it on with a favorable recommendation.
Recommendation, yeah. Planning, just to be clear, the planning commission did meet and did recommend this closing, so you've heard the resolution and the explanation. What is the board's pleasure?
I make the motion to approve the closure and quitclaim.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to approve the resolution 2021-12, closing and quitclaim the alley right-of-way at Twilight Lane. It has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries without opposition.
Thank you.
Consideration of parking plan for Main Street.
Okay, this is the one that might get somebody a finger pointed at them at Walmart one day, but if you're...
Like you and me, right?
Yeah.
Which finger?
Ah, good question. So you'll recall, I don't know when, but at some point, because time's nebulous anymore, I don't know how long ago it was, but we looked at when we repaved MEMS and McSween that we changed the parking to parallel because the angle parking doesn't allow for enough room for two cars to pass each other. And it's in our own code, and I think I put it in there on the orange sheet, that our own ordinance zoning, or not zoning, but our own code calls for parallel parking and to remove angle if you can't safely pass. So it's my determination that you can't do that, and if anybody's driven over here between McMahon and MEMS on a busy day, and there's an F-450 parked diagonally in front of Dry Goods, it's really hard to get by, especially if another car's coming. So this will change the parking. I've got the diagram in there to show you guys what, what it's going to look like and how many spaces it'll be all the way down to court. And it'll be different than it's been in a long time, and people don't sometimes like change, so it may take some getting used to. But I've not had anybody come in and yell at me about MEMS or McMahon yet, so maybe this will just slide gently under the radar.
How many parking lots will we, will we be leasing?
Let me tell, I didn't put it on there, did I? When I first drew it all out, I, I had that number, and then we kind of decided, because we're paving, are we paving next week or two weeks from now?
Next week.
Next week. And so I asked sort of on the last day to set the agenda, and I didn't. I've, I've got the number, and I'll get it to you. I'm making notes. I think it's net eight lost from here to here, I think. But Mayor and I are also going to meet with Commercial because they own the two lots and see if we can't negotiate some more public parking. One down here, and then the other would be next to the courthouse. I, I think eight. Let me confirm that. I know I counted it when I drew it, but I didn't get that information on the orange sheet.
All right, you've heard the park, heard about the plan. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to set that. Second.
Okay, we do have consideration of parking plan for Main Street has been motion and has been properly seconded. What is, we need a vote for, well, we don't need a roll call, but just all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries without opposition.
Thank you.
Item H is consideration of COVID premium pay.
As you, again, as y'all were, you can talk about it. I'll let, I'll let you talk about it.
I agree.
Thank you, thank you. We, we have been allocated just over $2 million in the American Rescue Plan funds from the federal government. We will be getting 1 million of that this year and 1 million, the other million next year. There are vast restrictions on what that money can be used for. One of the things that it can be used for, and that every recipient is utilizing it for, is what is called a premium pay bonus for employees who had to work all through the COVID pandemic. Everyone's aware that a lot of folks were able to go home, some places shut down and people just drew unemployment. Some people were able to go home and work remotely from home, and I even had an employee come and talk to me about that at the very beginning of the pandemic, could they do some working from home? And I told him, when he figured out how to pick up garbage from home, that I would be willing to entertain that possibility, but, and that's a true story. But anyway, one of the things that the government, the federal government has recognized is that, that folks who had to work during the pandemic under tough circumstances should be rewarded for that. And so, one of the approved uses of the funds is to give employees that premium pay bonus. And what I would like to do, and what I have proposed here, is to give each full-time city employee, and this starts in 2020 and runs through this year, but the timeframe that's covered by this, but I would like to give each full-time employee, and this would be next, after the first of the year, a $6,000 bonus for those two years, and all part-time employees a $3,000 bonus for those two years. No local monies would be involved in this. This is strictly out of the American Rescue Funds that are being provided by the federal government. There's a lot of things that this money cannot be used for that I don't agree with, like building repairs, highway maintenance, paving, I mean, there's a laundry list of things we need that we can't use this money for, and an limited number of things we can use the money for. And so, this is one of the things, and I think it's a good thing. I think these folks that couldn't stay home, that had to, that had to come to work to provide these essential services should be rewarded, and I'm happy that that was a part of this plan to reward these folks, and it's my request that that be approved.
Okay, you've heard the explanation of consideration of COVID premium pay. What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion, we have, I make a motion, we accept that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to accept the consideration of COVID premium pay. It's been properly seconded. We will probably need a roll call on this one.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries without opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item I. Now, Jeremy, you can come up, come on up.
He's just excited. He's excited, he's excited.
With consideration of hiring a firefighter for the Newport Fire Department.
Yes, and I'm asking for the board to hire to replace someone that resigned in September. And the civil service, we've had our written test, our physical test, and our interviews, and Dylan Johnson is number one on our list, and he's actually in here tonight, so.
Yes. Would you like to say something?
I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity that Jeremy has bestowed upon me, and you all feel the need that I would be who you chose to represent the City of Newport with the best of my ability.
All right, you've heard consideration of hiring a firefighter for the Newport Fire Department. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to accept. Mr. Johnson.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve Mr. Dylan Johnson as the, our consideration of hiring a firefighter. Mr. Dylan Johnson is number one for the Newport Fire Department. He's been properly seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please signify your approval by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries without opposition.
Thank you.
Only thing you got to get is another one. I'm just kidding, Jeremy.
Congratulations. All right, item J is consideration of an application for a certificate of compliance for a liquor store.
If you all recall back in the summer, we, we took applications open to anyone that wished to apply to, to come back and apply for a liquor license for the, to replace the liquor store that we lost due to a closure. And after an elimination process, the board chose Mike Ottinger to be allowed to file that application with the state. Each of you received a packet like this in, with your book that came out last week. This includes his application, his background check, everything, his application, or his background check was spotless, his application fits all the requirements, and we will forward this on to the state if approved tonight for him to apply for his liquor store license. And we would like these back to tonight, because we want to shred these, because they have a lot of his personal information in it, and so we will shred them first thing in the morning. We don't want anybody to get in their hands on his, on his personal information.
Okay, you've heard consideration of an application for a certificate of compliance for a liquor store. You've heard the explanation. What is the board's pleasure?
I have a motion to accept the application for Mr. Ottinger. I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then, and it has been properly seconded. Please, let's have a roll call on this one.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries without opposition. Thank you. Item 10 is bids, purchases, and expenses. Item A is consideration of bids for renovation of the Cosby Highway side of the community center.
It's been a process. Two months ago, we tried to piecemeal a lot of our work that had to be done on the renovations of the Newport Community Center. We couldn't get bids, we couldn't get companies to come and look at it, we had a lot of issues just trying to get people here because of the COVID factor is, is what a lot of them, we're saying they didn't have employees and they didn't have manpower. So, working with finance, we put the bundle together, so to speak, and so when we put everything in and made it a large project, we were able to get bids, and those bids are in front of you. And that's why there are so many things in that particular bid, about the doors, about the storefronts, the openings, the handicaps, everything to meet the needs of our community that's required. So, in 1976, the city started building the Newport Community Center, and Mr. Roland Dykes had, had mayor.
Roland Junior.
And senior.
And the third, too, I might add.
Came home from school to carry the brick and block to make sure that it got laid.
Yes, I did.
So, in 1978, the community center opened to our community, and this is one of the major renovations that's ever gone on at that center. And it's, every day I learn something new about that building, about putting a spec together of how to even get a bid. So, it's been a tremendous learning process, and I highly recommend this, acceptance of these bids here.
This is budgeted item?
Yes.
Yes. Budgeted item? Yes, sir. All right. Okay, you've heard the explanation for consideration of bids for renovation of Cosby Highway side of the community center. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve this request.
I'll say it. We have a motion on the board then to approve the consideration of bids for renovation of Cosby Highway side of the community center. It has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
I think it's long overdue, and I think Newport was probably on the cutting edge back in mid-'70s when we first got this, and it seems like people have come on board over the years and got their community centers on. It's, it's nice to be first for a while.
Amen.
I think this is long overdue. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
And Mike is a frequently user of our Newport Community Center.
I usually leave three pounds ago.
You're still welcome.
No, we have a vote yet. We need roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Item, motion carries without opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Also, I'd like to say thank you for considering the raises for our employees in the COVID pay for all of them. Thank you very much.
Item B is, is the item that we added to the agenda, which is the street department truck that you have in your package, or that was handed to you earlier. Got a chance to take a look at that? We'll take, what's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the truck.
Second.
Tough getting that one out right. Okay.
It's a forward.
It's a forward, yes. All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the purchase of a truck for the street department, and the bid amount is $72,950 and zero seven. That motion has been.
No, I don't, I don't think that's right.
That's a little high.
Oops. Am I looking at the wrong one?
Okay.
Yeah, that was the community center.
You want to amend that motion?
Yeah.
Now, that's not the budget.
Well, they let you pick up the difference.
Okay, my bad. We'll take, let's take, just to stay with the rules here, let's amend your motion, please.
I will amend my motion to approve the $44,421 for that.
I'll amend my second.
All right, we do have a motion on the board then to approve purchase of the truck for the street department in the amount of $44,421. It has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes. I'd like to thank all the department heads, too. Now, we do this about every time we meet, and I appreciate the work they do, because they do this work every day, and you see the improvements in their town, and you see the cleanness of it, you see the hard work in the town, and I just want to say thank you one more time.
All right, we do have, that motion was, was approved without opposition. Item 11, comments from citizens.
I get to leave my hat on this, for this announcement. On December 7th, the AMVITS Post 75 will be celebrating the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor, the attack on Pearl Harbor. The National Park Service and the Navy are doing a big program in Hawaii, and two years ago, we did a program here at the county courthouse. AMVITS has a very big role in the memorial, the Arizona Memorial in Hawaii, so we will be having a program for that, and we will also be dedicating the new flagpole on, it will be December 7th at 1:00 p.m. Now, as judge advocate for the DAV Chapter 102, I'd like to invite everyone to their meal Thursday night. That'll be at 6:00 p.m. It's a free community dinner, it's a smoked chicken dinner done by their second vice commander this year, Dave Kinning. That should be a very good turnout, and we'd like to wish you all to come there. And then, next weekend, on the 12th, 13th, and 14th, the Tennessee Legacy Site Foundation is partnering with Food City, my other organization, Veterans in Focus, the local DAR, and numerous other organizations to do a fundraiser in front of Food City to raise monies for the Reefs Across America program. This past year, with Sheila Evans, who's with the DAR, we partnered and put 40 of these reefs on the graves of veterans that are in the family cemeteries that have been taken into the national park. This year, we're up to 49, and there's a total of 201, I believe, in all, all the park system itself. So, I'd invite you to stop by the booth and, and maybe get some of the city folks to, to come in and help donate a little bit. These things are $15 apiece, so this, this will be an annual ongoing thing, and I'd just like to thank you all for all that you do for us.
Rob, did y'all have anything to do with the flags at the cemetery? Does that, that got anything to do with you?
No, sir. I've, I've got a couple of phone calls in, and I'd like to know who did all of those.
That's really made a big difference up there, those new flags and everything.
Yes, sir.
That's really helped our cemetery.
Yeah, we, and the veterans organizations, we did talk for the last couple of years trying to figure out if one of the poles was damaged, and, and so these new flags are really going to be great. And then also, we'll be putting one of those reefs on Charles McGay's tomb as the Medal of Honor winner.
Thank you, Rob. Y'all, me, too, Rob.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, Rob. Any other citizens wish to be heard? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
We adjourn.
Second.